Five fifteen, do we on?
Live.
Excellent. So, welcome to the Oneatchee City Council Work Session for August twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Just so the council knows, we are on some sort of a virtual YouTube or Facebook live. So, again, these are all open to the public and they can be watching at home and this is being recorded for anybody who cares to use it. So, we have two items from Mr. De Vries today, wooey codes and the noise ordinance. He would like to deal with the noise ordinance first. So, if that's okay with everybody, I think we'll just go ahead and start with the noise ordinance and then we'll move up to the wooey code after that. So Glenn, go ahead.
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, when the city council was reviewing the potential changes to the noise ordinance, we were requested to come back with a process to further evaluate it and eventually come back with our recommendation to council on this issue. So, this, tonight, all I have before you is a process for your consideration. And what we're proposing is similar to what was actually done in the housing code update and the sign code update. We thought a subcommittee process was really viable, had good interaction with the council members and the planning commissioners, and came up with some good recommendations, we thought, in that. So, we're proposing that three council members, two planning commission members, and then the executive services director, police chief, and/or appointee, city attorney, and then community development staff participate in that process. This has been looked at, you know, quite a bit. So, what we're proposing is for staff to get together as a team and do some additional research and ideas and options for the process. And then, starting in late January, have, start with a subcommittee, anticipating two to three meetings leading up to workshop with city council in March. That's our proposal. We can certainly change that if there are any concerns or redirection, but that's what we propose to address this recommendation for you. Any concerns or redirection?
I don't have any concerns, other than the concern that I've expressed for a while, which is I don't think we need to change our noise ordinance, but that's an opinion that I've had for quite a little while, figuring out how we sort of got here in terms of the moratorium and that sort of stuff, and that we sort of drug the noise ordinance in for a specific reason, and if it's not broken, what are we trying to fix? But that is my opinion, not that of the council, who gets to set laws in the city of Oneatchee, not me, but that continues to be my opinion.
Well, I, I agree. Oh, good. And to a large extent. And that may be what comes out of this.
Okay.
I think the noise act...
No change is an alternative.
Yes, no action alternative will definitely be on the list.
Okay.
I, you know, all due respect, your honor, I guess I don't agree that it's not broken. But, but it's not irredeemable either. So, I think, I think there are some things that we need to take a serious look at. And I guess that the process kind of, when we launched this whole thing, was to do one thing and we ended up doing something entirely different.
Right. And I agree with you on that, because that's exactly what we did, yeah.
Yeah, and so it kind of got off track. But anyway, be that as it may, this is where we are, and I think this is a good, good way for us to have a good, good look at it.
I'm fine with it. I, I don't have any problem with the process. I just know it's going to be a lot of work and a lot of work for staff. I just want to make sure that we agree that this is the right time and the right attempt to take it on and go, so. Any questions for Glenn or comments?
Was there, was there any discussion about having just any members of the public on the commission, or do we think we want to keep it in-house at this point?
We were trying to keep the scope and timeframe fairly narrow on this, but we certainly follow your direction if you'd like to broaden it and have a public component on the committee.
And I follow that, Keith, although, like I said, the no action alternative is on the table.
Yeah.
And if we decide that there, there needs to be action, then, then maybe there's another way to vet the public. But, but right now, it's, it's really an internal review.
Well, if we, once we come up with a recommendation, then it'll go to the standard public process where there will be public hearings before we adopt it, correct?
That's correct.
So, the public is still going to have their say.
And we would, we have a significant mailing list for interested parties on this issue, and we definitely would use our standard practices and make sure that all the interested parties are...
Not only would there be a public hearing to some extent in front of the planning commission at some point, but then another public hearing in front of the city council as well.
Yeah.
And on this item, it would be limited to city council unless you would like an advisory recommendation. This code doesn't technically, under land use provisions, go before the planning commission, unless you specifically want them.
So, we'll see what the committee recommends when you guys get your work done. And do we have volunteers from the council who wants to sit on this committee? Are you going to work on that later?
If there are volunteers tonight, that'd be one less step if I could get three volunteers.
I like noise. This is, this is starting in January?
Correct.
I would, I would volunteer.
Looks like we're all volunteering. Should we draw sticks?
So Ruth and Travis have, have said no thank you. Linda's not here to describe what she wants, but I think she's interested in maybe no thank you. So, the four of you, we get to draw straws or something, because only the three of you can be on there, so.
I'm, I'm not adamant about being on there, but...
I'm not either.
You could have an alternate in case someone can't attend, though. You know, that might not be a bad thing.
I'll be an alternate.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Jose, Jim, and Mark, if Keith is an alternate, okay?
Great, thank you very much. All right, I think...
All right, next item on wooey code.
Is this where we play the Bee Gees Disco Inferno song?
Disco Inferno?
We have two lumped items before you this evening. We've got updates. We have a review of wildland urban interface issues that are specifically tied to the residential foothills load zoning district. If you recall, last year, you asked that staff come back with some recommendations on the residential foothill zone, whether it needed to be updated. And just let me pull this up here, sorry. There we go. Just, again, where is this? This is on the southwest corner of the city and then also on the western edge of the city. And there's a significant area of undeveloped ground in these locations in the foothills. Again, the purpose of this was we received direction from the city council to come back before you in August to make a report on whether the planning commission thought there should be changes to this district for a variety of reasons. We've drafted, staff has drafted revisions to the residential foothills, and the planning commission has had workshops on them and has been very supportive of the changes. The, so this little background, again, the comprehensive plan and zoning map changes occurred in nineteen, two thousand and nineteen. We notified all the property owners of potentially affected and interested parties, and we received concerns and support, you know, variety of interest on it, for and against. And planning commission, at that point, was not prepared to move forward and recommended denial. City council approved the change, but with the directive that the zoning district be reviewed for any potential changes. After adoption, it was appealed to the growth management hearing board. The city and the appellant agreed to settle the case. Essentially, the settlement was that we were going to review it with the planning commission and come back before you this August, which we were already intending to do, and the appellant was fine with that. So, I'm going to have two components. Cliff is also going to speak to the fire components. But if you look at the whole purpose of the residential foothills district, can everybody hear me with the mask? Yep, okay. If you look at the whole purpose of the, and how the residential foothills district started, started with a foothill study process and looking at the unique nature of our foothills, the environmental constraints, mule deer, erosion hazards, stormwater, wildfire issues, and then just the, you know, sort of the, the value of our foothills for a view shed and aesthetic provision. So, that, that, those studies were then the precursor to the establishment of this zoning district. Since that time, the city's done a variety of studies. We've updated a whole series of codes, and so it was, it's very timely for us, we believe, and the planning commission believes, to do some updates to the zoning district. So, what we have, we have updated our housing code. We feel that we can fit in some additional housing types. We are, it is an urban district, so fitting these in, and with our new design and development standards, we feel they can blend in well in, in this zoning district and provide some additional opportunities for residential uses in these areas. And those include duplexes, patio homes, and single-family clustered lots as additional options above and beyond just a standard single-family home without increasing the height from where it is today. And we have additional direction in our new zoning standards that addresses heights to try to address compatibility that we didn't have before. We also have some new standards proposed that Cliff will be talking about that augment our existing wildland urban interface standards and are unique to the very purpose of the district, being that sort of the interface between more developed areas, and Cliff will talk about that. And they're based on a variety of things that I won't get into, that he has a good presentation on. And one of the things that was in there, again, was environmental provisions and critical area provisions. Well, the city's done a lot of updates since this district came in place, and there's no reason to duplicate or be in conflict with the standards that we have, such as stormwater provisions, wildland urban interface provisions, critical area provisions, and street standards. So, we're proposing a whole series of deletions in that district because it needs to be updated. And it's not really good code writing to duplicate those standards. So, that is proposed. And the other changes are decreasing our minimum lot size, allowing those for single-family duplex and clustering, proposing a density change from two to four housing units per acre. What was existing in that district was a little bit blunt as far as a tool. It had a good intent to try to fit in and look at the character of the foothills, but it was a bit of a blunt tool with really large setbacks and, and density at two units per acre. But with new design standards, new development standards, you know, really just using setbacks to regulate something like that really isn't necessary. You can fit in more density, but more, you have to meet the design development standard, so it's not going to work, it won't work on every location because of slopes, critical areas, and topography. So, every site won't lend itself to four units per acre, but some do. And some sites will need additional fire buffers, which Cliff will be speaking to, and so not every site will be able to get up to four units per acre, but some can. And so this was, this has been received very well from the public feedback we've received from property owners, and the planning commission has been very supportive, too, because if you recall, as I said, planning commission wasn't originally too supportive of the changes, but I, I think there's a sense of comfort in a lot of these changes, that they're feeling a lot better about it if, if these components were included. There's adjustments to lot dimensions, setbacks, and lot coverage to accommodate the different housing types and lot sizes, and again, no change to building height. So, those are one side of the changes. The, the fire hazard prevention, though, is a big component of this district, part of the rationale for it, and so Cliff will speak to that.
Well, you know, this memo that I've written, you know, it was written with the assistance of Fire Chief Brian Brad, because he's, he'd been doing fire here in the Oneatchee area for twenty-five years or so. And that area is a very important area in town. It's one of the larger undeveloped things that are right at our wildland interface. And a wildland fire coming through, that could affect a major portion of our residential core, as we found out in the Broadview fires of two thousand and fifteen, when we had embers blow down into our industrial zone. In that, which in two thousand and fifteen, the Broadview area, those homes that were built there didn't have any fire-resistant standards, no landscaping standards or anything like that. They are since, they have been rebuilt with those fire-resistant standards, and I think they withstand pretty good now. And to extend that out, Triad Development, that, that will be built to those fire-resistant standards. The landscaping will be fire-resistant. And to bring that on over into this foothills would do almost about fifty percent of our wildland urban interface, which is very important. I don't, I'm not going to read this verbatim, but you're all aware that we've had two significant fires in probably the last thirty years. Passo Rock in ninety-two and Sleepy Hollow in two thousand and fifteen. What happened with a lot of those is, is that wildland fire came in, the structures caught on fire, and the embers from those structures ignited other structures. And that's the big problem with these wildland fires, there's not a lot of fuels in our wildland urban interface. You know, it's grass two to three feet high, but once it gets in and starts burning our structures, that's when it really starts getting hot, throwing embers, and we expose a lot more buildings to fire. The city adopted a wildland urban face code in two thousand and eleven, really didn't have an opportunity to utilize it until after the two thousand and fifteen Broadview fire. After that, there was a study, done a CPAS study, on how could we improve that code? And we have went back, staffs went back, and we have a draft that we'll be bringing to council soon. What we'd like to do is incorporate the foothill setbacks into buffers into that draft. And just for proportion, this is the city's code, it's about eight pages long, this there wildland. This is the international one, it's sixty-three, and it's just much easier. Several years ago, the county was looking at adopting this code, and they asked us to hold off from adopting our code, because they really wanted us to adopt this code so that we were treating everybody the same. That is one by the wayside, they're not looking at that. They're probably going to go with the state's adopted code. But that won't happen until the DNR does statewide mapping, which right now is, could be quite some time, so.
That's good. Excuse me, if they, if the county did adopt the state, does that then supersede ours?
No, no, wouldn't affect it.
And the nice thing about what, what's been tailored to our areas, it really hones down to what our issues are. And, you know, we don't have a fire management or a stream management issues in our urban growth area, you know? It, but really simplifies it, but it's meaningful.
Our, our biggest threat is grassland. Sagebrush, bitter brush, you know, we don't have the tall trees that, that they do in the county. In this handout, you'll just see a couple photos, kind of talk, show some planning tools on how we can deal with the wildland urban interface. Some of the buffer sizing considerations adjacent wildlands fuels, and as shown in the Broadview fires, that fire came from the west with, by the wind, forcing itself into the Broadview neighborhood, and those fuels caught very quickly in that neighborhood. The other is, the big issue is what's, was what affected all of our downtown industrial buildings was the ember zone. I think we were lucky that we didn't have more structure burn from the ember zone in that fire with the way we had embers floating so far.
We're lucky it didn't jump the river, because embers were landing over there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's amazing of that quarrel there. And then, the other issue is homes constructed on or near the top of the slopes, which we will have in that foothills area on the easterly side of that. We'll have homes that are built on the top or possibly even down mid-slope, and those are at more at risk of burning, as shown those homes in Broadview or at the top of the canyon, where that fire raced up, flames shot over those structures and engulfed them. So, with that in mind, and Brian and I discussed what would be a good setback and, for that area, because really that, that will protect that portion of town once it's developed. And so, we're recommending a hundred-foot buffer on the westerly side of that zone, with an exception for a reduction if they put the street between the, the wildlands and the residences, because then we have a non-combustible surface.
Right.
And we have an area for firefighting capabilities to engage that fire that's coming, pre-wet some, the grasses on the west side and that. And then, for the structures that are going to be on the easterly side of that zone, the top of the slope here, we're saying fifty feet, unless they build a retaining wall, a non-combustible retaining wall at the top of the slope, that essentially they have looked at it and they say, a fire racing up the slope will come up and hit the wall, got to create a wall, and it's non-combustible, so it wouldn't burn, and it keeps that fire from shooting into the residence, so. So, it's trying to come up and say, okay, fifty feet is fairly safe, but if you do this, we can reduce it to thirty. Our homes are going to be built out of the fire-resistant materials already existing in our ordinance.
So, I had a question on this Dakota Ridge Village. I know they have...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the street on the outside. Have, have we looked at, instead of having developers spend that additional funds for a street on that outside, do we have a fire access road that was gravelled, non-combustible, instead of a full street? Has that been looked at at all?
I can, I can tell you that, that's a possibility, in that hundred-foot buffer, they could put one.
Would that reduce their...
But the Fire Chief, his, his perspective on fire department access in our urban core, in our urban area, is it's, it's paved road, because he said, you know, just a gravel road isn't going to be accessible for them all the time, depending on the weather condition. But that's a, that's something, you know? This is, we didn't take everything in.
I think there's some talk about further up the foothills and putting in a gravel road just for secondary access and to get trucks up even higher than we're talking about with the zoning area. But that's only different than a, what would be considered, I think, at this point, a residential street that would be used to access houses and those sorts of things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I'm just looking at the cost to put an extra road on the outside of a, of development is quite significant.
Quite frankly, it doesn't necessarily have to be an extra road, it might just be a road that's...
Yes, it's not required.
Yeah.
If they do it, there's...
That's right. Because single-sided, we understand that single-sided lot roads with lots on one side are more expensive. Granted, those would have a fantastic view of the west, instead of being a backyard. But anyway, that was our, that was our recommendation discussion with Brian, what he thought he could defend a fire from coming into, into those neighborhoods.
And that was a huge focus of, you know, yes, you have design, yes, you have the environmental, but the very, one of the fundamental purposes for the residential foothills was fire. But the amendments to the wildland urban interface that would go through the same timeframe as the other code changes to residential foothills, should you choose to have us move forward with that, would come out at the same time. It's just, again, there'd be a section that would apply to the residential foothills that's unique to it on this buffering, as a, as a component of it. Appreciate all of Cliff's research and work and coordination with the fire district on We, available for any...
Do you have anything else?
Available for any questions you may have, certainly, in looking for your direction. Are we on the right track? You know, obviously, you can make changes and what have you, or consider final recommendation from the, from the planning commission. But we're looking for your direction, as, as was your request for us to come back before you at this time. Or are, and are you ready for planning commission to continue this work and go ahead and send out a draft for sixty-day review? We'd be having a workshop with you before it would come to hearing, planning commission would make a recommendation, and then you'd have a final decision in December if you'd like us to move forward. We're just looking for your direction at this time.
I guess my thought on this stuff is, may have been forged over the years, but we really like, we really do not like doing regulations and planning when we're not faced with a disaster. And so when we say, you know, the property owners are happy, which ones? The ones that want to develop or the ones that don't want the fire? And, you know, whether it's flood or earthquake ratings or, you know, we just don't like it. And then we have a conflagration or an earthquake or that, and all of a sudden, we want codes. Now, we're a couple of years after these fires. It's going to be interesting to see what the community's appetite is, the development community's appetite is for some of the standards in there, you know? And I think we need to be careful, that we need to remember how bad that fire could was, but as you said, Cliff, how bad it could have been, and do our utmost best to make sure that if we have that, we don't lose our downtown, we don't jump the rivers, we don't come down in the hills. And that isn't no growth, it's this stuff, you know? Jim often uses the, sometimes uses the expression death by a thousand cuts, and I, I'm always nervous when we're working, when, when we have something figured out with the fire folks who are the experts, and you as the building expert, and then we start through our public process, which are, that we end up with something that's not going to work. And I guess that's, that's, I mean, I'm ready to go from my perspective, it's just, I'm not ready to reduce standards that will potentially harm our community, even though it might be another twenty or thirty years before we have another fire event like that, which hopefully we never have.
Yeah, absolutely. Which I think this meets the intent of what we were trying to do, is obviously the density was an issue in that area, and then I think, I think changing densities, I think giving them some clustering opportunities, I think getting the wooey code in there with some of the setbacks is all sorts of, you know, I think we made that decision, whatever that was, last December. You know, it was, it was idea between safety and the community and the number of houses, and it's like there's a balancing act there, and I think the things that they've talked about are sort of a balancing act. Developers still has the ability to put in a number of homes, but they can be done in a safe way, and so I, I think it strikes a pretty good balance. I'm sort of prepared for you guys to go forward with it, and it's responsible for us to have the wooey code in the spots where it's needed. It just, it really is. And it's, you know, the county, I think, needs to be doing that, and they're not, and they may be just hiding behind the fact that they don't want to adopt something that's much bigger. They could adopt ours and be just fine with it, right? I mean, it's not like we couldn't share it with them, so I, I think it, it strikes a pretty good balance to me.
I can't tell you, that was a CPAS study, that was, we did not, staff didn't support some of the recommendations, because we thought they went a little too far. We didn't take them all.
Right.
The nice thing, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions. I, you know...
I, you know, one, the 2,000 additional dollars for an 1,800 square foot residence? That seems pretty reasonable, actually. I was surprised it was that low. And I think some of that is probably because we've already adopted those type of materials. I know my house has concrete siding and it's pretty standard.
Amazingly, LP, which is wood composite, is a little more expensive, the siding. You wouldn't believe it, but it is. But some of the trim components and other things is what brings up the cost for 2,000. And the fire resistant then.
So the, the open space, how would an area like this be maintained? I mean, who would be responsible for keeping those?
Homeowners.
So that would, that would have to be built in as the development is happening. This all has to be, so if we don't continue to move forward right now, there's a potential that a few developments could already be underway that wouldn't have to adopt these. Or can we tell them this is in the works and whatever we come up with, you are going to be required to follow?
Right now, they would meet our current standard in the foothill, which is 30.
But we need to get this going sooner than later, it sounds like.
Well, we, if you remember back when we did this, we sort of had two options. We sort of had leave it where it's at. Or we took it probably further to the lack, fewer number of homes per acre, right? And we said, we're going to try to meet in the middle. So this is the process of actually allowing a little bit more density than the current zoning would. Because we went from, you know, you could build 400 houses on whatever it was to you could build 70 houses. And now we're going, oh, no, you can build somewhere in between with standards.
Come up with the standard.
Yeah, so this is actually allowing under our current zone, a little bit more housing given, but they have to, you know, use these setbacks and adopt the wooey code and all that. Am I saying that sort of correctly, if I remember sort of how we went?
And I think you end up with more flexibility, increased density, but you have better fire sense, fire science and better protection.
So the landowners here want to wait, are waiting for this so they can get a little bit more densities, I think.
I agree, we need to move forward with it.
And these buffers aren't just where you clear everything. It's, all you're doing is you're thinning it out to reduce the fire load. And do it to maintain.
But, but unless they're maintained on a regular basis, they're, they're no good.
Yeah, and Triad, they have a fire safety control for their development.
So this Dakota Ridge is, is not necessarily Davenport's development. This is a development some other place that you're using.
It's older than Colorado.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think he was that far along yet.
No.
So I have a question. If we go from two to four per acre, you, you mentioned that there's some spots that you couldn't do the four?
Yeah, if you have real steep, I'm sorry, real steep topography.
Okay.
You know, it, you're not going to get four units per acre.
And so you don't think that would create a problem, let's say with a developer that comes in and says, hey, I want to build four on here, you know, let's say it's right on, right below a big steep hill. And they're like, well, I think I could do it. And you're going, no, you can't because this is, this could only fit two or one. You don't, I mean, how do you fix that problem with them coming back and saying, well, you know, you're, you're prohibiting me, but then the, my neighbor over there has four.
Yeah, no, it's a really good question. And fortunately, we've got some good tools and code to address it. We have a slope protection ordinance that looks at building sites to make sure how they're setting that up with retaining walls so that.
Can't have driveways that go like this or driveways that go like that.
Maximum driveway slope standards. We have, oh, we're looking at, we have a geologic hazard ordinance and the geotech report requirements, geologic technical report requirements. We make sure that each lot is suitable for the placement of a single framing residence as a plat. So for example, we're looking at Triad right now. And we saw some lots where there's a 20 to 30 foot cut associated with a road. And then they're supposed to have a driveway, but the driveway is what 30% slope. Like, well, that doesn't work. No, and so we, we look at those when we do a plat review and we go back with additional information with the codes we have in place. And we make them show that they're buildable with additional information and Triad's doing that. But it's a good question and we feel that we have the tools to do that.
Okay. Well, I, I really like the balance that this strikes, so thumbs up.
Thank you.
All right, so I guess take it through the public process and bring it to us before the end of the year. Is that the thought?
Yes. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So I've only got a couple of things. We did, as you might have seen on the newspaper, we did get some more money for the NEPA work on Confluence Parkway. So I think we're up to just under $500,000 that we've got between the port and Link and the PUD. And we're still working with the PUD on a few things that might increase that a little bit. So we haven't, we haven't come up with a plan yet that says we're good to go. But hopefully in the next maybe two weeks, we'll be able to feel like we're in pretty good shape enough to get that all the way to the finish line by the middle of next year. So thanks to our friends at Link, Jim was at that board meeting. And then the port, of course, and the PUD has presented us with some money, but we got to do a little bit more work with them. They're integrantly involved in the last part of environmental stuff. So just trying to figure out the roles of each organization and how much they should contribute to that is still under discussion. So I'm cautiously optimistic we will get there. I think the city will be in for a little bit, but it won't be significant. I guess would be my, my thought at this point. Laura, anything else, chief? I know we're dealing with the homeless folks down in the Plaza area by the convention center. So I've been on the phone with Linda this week. We continue to get complaints from the cars. I sent you another email down on Worthing Street. And I think we're doing all we can do with those. We're.
Locomotive park.
Locomotive parks not in very good shape right now. So now we're sending our park screws out there two at a time, not one at a time, just for safety reasons. I think there's damage to our sprinkler systems in some of the parks almost daily now as people don't like to get wet, so they'll go damage the irrigation box so they can sleep. I don't know, what are you seeing, Jose? Is this just a group that are coming from some other place? I mean, you're the one that tells me that you sort of think that that's what you're seeing because they get on the link bus.
I do, I do see, I mean, that's a few, a few percentage are coming from out of town weekly. And we can tell who's new, who's not.
Right.
And the ones locally are, are heading straight to the locomotive and are mainly staying on the, the areas of the bridge and by the loop trails. They're, I mean, they're, they're coming, they're more coming. I can see at the Columbia station, the buses coming in, you can see that the new people are coming in. Somebody's sending them or they're telling them, hey, go to Wenatchee or something. As you can tell right away. And once I see them, a week later, they're riding the bus. Nowhere to go.
Buses go both directions.
Yeah, so.
And I think Glenn has talked with the county about maybe doing a cleanup on the river here sometime, hopefully this fall. So we'll see if we can do, but then we're going to have to do it regularly if we decide to start doing it. So we're sort of trying to figure that out. The homeless committee will meet next week to talk about whether or not we start the, the study that you guys approved me to sign. We'll meet with the county next week and others to see if we're going to go forward with that. Again, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to go forward unless there's a commitment to one, build a shelter. And two, in my opinion, do the one tenth sales tax in order to operate a shelter. Those should be, both counties should be doing that, but we'll see what the appetite for that is.
Do you have one question?
Yes, chief.
We wired up a special provision.
Oh, good.
So we're trying to get the heat wet. There was some rain. Homeless outreach, we reached out to the providers of that. Not very specific to law. If we have something that they're going to send our way, we might get a webinar. That's the title. The title on it is extremely involved and on person also. So there may be some things that we need to learn from that. There may be some Ferrari where, I think we're diversion program like that. But they have a healthy list of new items. Kind of figure out a way to emulate our, our volunteers and police services. Start bringing up something around town, helping to do that. We'll be within a government order. Volunteer, yeah, and then you start with some major work from that strategic plan. A lot of really good projects are offered. Hopefully we're going to be able to present at our public safety committee meetings and make all of it better. And then maybe be able to share it with all.
Thanks, chief. Anything else, council members? We'll have a.
Well, we had a, a good chamber meeting the other day.
Good.
Home sales are actually pretty high right now. Median price of houses in Wenatchee is now over 400,000.
Wow.
And inventory from this year to last year is actually down 57%. So we, home starts are kicking in again big. And it'll probably help alleviate some of that pressure, but not for a while.
I just think there's a lot of people wanting to get out of the big city and they're coming this way.
And there, and that was actually mentioned that almost all of their clients in town right now looking for homes are from Seattle or California. The other thing I thought was interesting is we are actually a test site for some of the COVID vaccinations. We've, we didn't get as many doses as they thought they were going to get, but they're actually developing that program to get some testing done.
Good.
They are coming from Russia.
From the health department news, it appears that we have crested the second wave. So numbers are going to start, I mean, based on how the curve is.
Second wave, really?
The first wave was the little wave, but then we had a big wave and they're calling that the second wave.
No way.
Anyway, it appears that the masks are working.
They're good. Anything else for everybody? So we'll have a, we have an exec session next week, so we'll go a little bit early. And then it looks like a decent agenda, so. All right, everyone, have a nice week and weekend.